All right, next thing on the agenda is the public hearing. First one is Lee County Board of Supervisors of Public Hearing on Tuesday, Office 15, 2023, at 5:30 PM in General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia to solicit input on rezoning request. Thomas and Patrick Pridemore applied to rezone property that is currently zoned R1 single-family residential to A1 agriculture. Property consists of approximately 1.40 acres and located in the Union Community adjacent to 626 San Cave Road and State Route 724. Tax parcel 63A-1, BKB 23-28. Anyone I could speak on this request? Come forward, state your name, your address, you have three minutes.
I'm Patrick Pridemore. I'm here today to advocate for myself, for my business, and the rezoning property adjacent to 626 San Cave Road, property where Brother Shop LLC is located. There are several reasons why we are requesting the rezoning. This was service of storage lot of customers vehicles we are in the process of working on and the ones we are currently working on. Lot for used parts people can purchase off of us to fix their vehicle or have us use complete or repair. If you look, most shops in the area have a building for work and a space to keep vehicles that are being worked on. Will be worked on vehicles people have not picked up and also vehicles they can use for them. We are doing the same. These vehicles have helped many people in the community that have been on the mountain who had vehicle problems or trailer problems and they needed someone right there to fix it. We have also had it to our business for this. It is a necessity to our business that we have these vehicles in this space. Not being to have, not being able to have a storage lot would take income away from our business and families. Having a small business is not easy. It doesn't make a ton of money. We are willing to work with people on keeping integrity of the area and bringing income and tourism into Lee County, but would like the same consideration back. As you can see from our pictures, it looks different than previous ones. We have greatly downsized the amount of cars, moved them around to where it looks more organized, and brought them away from the road. We want to keep it looking better and only have the two rows you will see in some pictures I had, I have on my phone. Here since we purchased the lot. We maintained it with bulldogs, excess dirt and rocks to build a three to four foot farm to ensure there is no contaminant entering the stream that run behind the vehicles. For behind the vehicles, I speak of. We keep it mowed for appearance and keep down on roads. We also have someone who has been wheeling around each vehicle for several years. This lot is in between three M1 lots and a special use permit A1 lot. We are also providing a petition that we have asked people to sign. We didn't get a lot of names, but we have our neighbors' names on there and people who have benefited from the vehicle, we have on the lot. It wasn't about getting a lot of names who don't know what we are about as a business or from people who don't have a stake in what we're doing. We have our neighbor's names. We have names on here of people who have lived in our neighborhood since we started the business. These people are in favor of the rezoning to better our business. I have to play this here. I've got the, my name is Thomas Stradwell, I'm the author of the petition. I've got the names on the petition, I've got a picture of where we cleaned it up if y'all would like to see it.
I'll put that on there.
Yeah, okay. Right here's the petition of all the names of every neighbor around us and they all signed and had no problems. There was no complaints of being woke up, of disturbance of any, of any kind. And they're actually, the freedom said, but also, and there was more than three quarters of these people willing to be here today, but I told them there should be no need. And we've got their names and their phone numbers which you could call to ask and confirm. And, I mean, there really not much more I can say except what he went up is, we're just honest people trying to make an honest living, you know? It's hard to do that right now, especially with a newcomer trying to get us out, you know? So, we appreciate anything y'all listen to and just oversee your decision.
You can apply the petition.
Anyone else who wants to speak?
There's a package with the pictures and stuff. We're about these two guys, some more information on that as well.
Good evening, my name is John Mealy, I'm the newcomer that you spoke of. I live on the property to the west side of the lot in question. We purchased our land in May of 2019. We operate Rock Bottom Forestand since last year, which is directly on the other side of the creek from this lot. The property, if you're not familiar with it, is on San Cave Road, which is the entrance to the Citotan Park as well as the Union Trailhead, which leads to White Rocks and San Cave, both at Tormala Cave National Historical Park. Not sure if y'all are aware of this, but the friends of Southwest Virginia are planning a new media tour of Lee County and they have asked us to participate with them in highlighting those two tourist attractions in our area. So, the request to rezone to agriculture. First off, the property is already in violation of the zoning ordinance. As stated, it is zoned as R1 residential. It has been used as an automobile salvage yard since at least 2019 when we moved there. There's pictures there of 2016 when they purchased the property as well as ones from earlier this year, 2023, from Google Maps. It has been described by park employees and tourists as an eyesore down the junkyard. That's their word. From our guests at the campground, it has been the number one complaint. They was asked what's up with the junkyard outside and if it was there, when we opened our business. The number two is the noise from the junkyard and from the shop late at night. The last page, I believe in your packet, has a list of just the last month. I'd also like to point out that just this last Sunday morning at 3:00 AM, I've got tourists that are coming in from Indiana, they're here for a week to spend their time and money in the community, and they were woke up to the sound of impact wrenches disassembling a vehicle at approximately 3:00 AM this morning. Now, that was not what happened, it just happened. As the homeowners have said, they have cleaned up the lot, a lot since that last vote in 2023, and I give that back. They have moved vehicles back off the road, reduced it down to two rows, got rid of a lot of vehicles. So, rezoning the property for A1 agriculture, it does not meet the requirements. Purpose of A1 is to preserve and maintain the predominantly rural character of the county by encouraging agricultural, forestry, open space, recreational, and conservation activities. It is designed to protect and conserve the natural resources of the county. Their intent is to apply for special use permit for an automobile graveyard. That does not fit with comprehensive plans intended to facilitate the creation of a convenient, attractive, and harmonious community. There is a special use permit for automobile graveyards, however, there's no fencing requirements or noise restrictions in the zoning ordinance for that. This special use permit is for a spot on, in my opinion, a large agricultural lot where it's kind of hidden, you know, safe, not on a 1.4 acre lot. For an auto graveyard, it should be zoned as M2, General Industrial District. This requires a special use permit for the automobile graveyard. It must be arranged or screened so materials stored there are not visible from public streets or adjacent properties. However, the yard requirements for M2 would be too restrictive, however, this board can make an exception to that. There is also Virginia Code 33.2-804, Junkyards, which requires a junkyard within 500 feet of highway be screened so it's not visible from the road. So, to sum it up, because I believe the alarm's going off, we prefer not to have junk dirt there. It's at the end of our driveway, we see vehicles in different stages of being torn apart. However, we understand, as they stated, it is a business, it's their livelihood. So, my request is that you guys deny the rezoning to A1 agriculture and incline to allow it to stay where it is, to rezone it as M2, General Industrial District, with the requirements to have a fence around the property that does not block our right of way to have on each end of that property, as well as have some type of noise restriction to prevent these three o'clock in the morning noise interruptions. I want to thank you for your time, if you have any questions?
I have one.
What's that? Was that junkyard there where you bought that property and moved there?
At the time when we bought it, there was approximately 15 cars. They were on the south end of the property, which is the opposite end from the driveway. The previous resident, who's now passed away, he advised us that, you know, they talked and at the time, it was just a couple cars. It's across from the shop. Since then, it has grown to the picture from earlier this year, there was a white truck disassembled totally right at the end of our driveway for months on it. I mean, it's, again, it's an eyesore, I understand that, it's a business, but we just asked that it, and then won't be fenced. Any other questions?
Anyone else like to address or hold concern this matter? If not, I'll close the floor. Excuse me.
Sorry. My name is Dustin, he is, um, just tremendous, but my opinion is they just, they help tremendously with people looking for parks and stuff.
Thank you. If not, I'll close the floor for public expression and entertain a motion to approve or disapprove.
Mr. Chairman, I was by there today and if the grass is cut, it is junkyard. But the grass is cut, there's no trees growing up, but they keep talking about scenery. Well, you know, when you first come in to San Cave, you got a stock barn down there. You got that. And you're going back, you got the old sawing factory in there. And then you got the, the old whatever it was for mining equipment or whatever directly across from this, right there. I haven't had any, anybody, I was there over the weekend, I went in and talked to people and they didn't have any complaints about it. And I haven't had anybody come to me that lives back there and say anything negative really about it because of all those other places that we got in there. I mean, if you drive in there, you got the stock barn there that you go by well on the weekend, you know what that is. And then you got back there then beside where the shop, it's that mining, whatever it was they had, stuff's there for us. Then you got the old sawing factory. So, on that, if you, I'm going to make the motion to move it from zone R1 single to what they're wanting, residential A1 agriculture, second.
I have a motion in the second, any discussion? If none, all in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next rezoning request, Presswood Properties LLC, Lee County Board of Supervisors of Public Hearing on Tuesday, Office 15, 2023, at 5:30 PM in General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia to solicit input on the rezoning request. Presswood Properties LLC has applied to rezone property that is currently zoned A1 agriculture to VC Village Commercial. Property consists of approximately 1.90 acres and is located 123 Canyon Creek Road, State Route 925, just off Kelly Road, State Route 643, in Canyon Creek Community. Tax parcel 36A-5-1-11, 1A through 11A, 1B-11B. Is there anyone here which speak on behalf of this request? If none, I'll close the floor and entertain a motion to approve or disapprove of this request.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to approve rezoning to A1 agriculture to VC Village Commercial.
I have the motion, I have the second.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? If none, all in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me. It's departmental reports, solid waste, litter, and recycling, animal control, and the work program. And next, I hope you guys had a chance to read all those. Next is public expression. Anybody would like to address the board?
Mr. Chairman, did you intend for the, I think Chester and Adam were here maybe to talk about rescue funding, did you intend for them to say what they had to say during public expression or were you going to do that?
That'd be fine. That's fine.
Okay.
My name is Chester, I'm under the captain of Jonesville Forest. Lee County is a $50,000 a year, which is not enough. And another one to divide it, like half of it gives up and half of it on a percentage of get run. I totally agree with that because you have departments that don't run cows, that way to cover their areas. Like Sheelke, I have them, they don't give very little cow, but very many cows, but they do run their cows. We've got Thomas Walker in Lower End, you don't know if you're going to get them or not, or if you do, it might take an hour before they even go and run. I think it's very unacceptable. I talked to Dane about it one day. If it's your mom or dad, would you want to wait like once an hour? Or would you want to help fund a department later that you know will be there? We have a crew of 24 every day, seven days a week. I don't know what your opinion on lighting money up or whatever, how y'all want to do it, but there's other counties or towns, counties around us, they get way more than we do. I mean, take Kansas, I talked to a guy in Oral Hancock County, Elseneville, they gets $55,000 a year from their county. Scott County, I think somebody said they just raised theirs like 50 something. Wise County gets 70, we only get 15. I mean, I know it's not the time here to really talk about, you know, mining, tractor mower, but like it's something really need to be looked at in the future because a lot of your departments that provide them 24 hour coverage seven days a week is about to go out. And I'm not sitting here trying to bull crack you. We're on the end of going out because insurance companies, we bill for $900, you might get $100. Insurance does not pay like it used to. And I talked to Sydney here a while back, and at some point, I mean, I don't know how y'all think about maybe doing like a $10 tax, personal property tax, to everybody who listed, hey, this is what, it's going for EMS and fire. You know, I would gladly pay $100 a year to know that that money went to fire EMS. I don't know, I mean, I'm pretty sure six in the week, I didn't even have to do that. And that they take money directly to that and make sure that they're there.
Do they give each one of their rescue squads that kind of money?
Yes, that's what they tell me.
In Wise and Scott?
Do you know what percentage of calls that Jones is making now?
We, last fiscal year, we ran 41.93% of cows in the Tyke County. Roughly 3,000, like 28 cows, we ran 1,300 to them.
Do you know what you've done since Pennington? So, part of that time Pennington wasn't online, right?
Yeah, and part of it were.
So, what about from the time Pennington came online?
I'm not really, I mean, I'm going to be honest, it's us a bitch. And I mean, they gladly come out, look at my way in our area, they don't hire like you know. But things are always saying, you know, they're going to have a crew or when they're not. I mean, I think they're doubling now, daytime crew or something. But gosh, I mean, historical near us for painting the army that I've got and Lower End, just never know.
I got, I got a question. It says that if we want to be open and honest, a couple years back, did you all have that same problem?
It's progressive, we gotten, insurance companies.
Just as simple yes or no, because I know for, I know the answer.
No, insurance companies, it's slow down pay.
So, you all had, you all, y'all maintained a crew for the last couple, two or three years solid, nobody else had to run your calls?
I mean, unless we're having another cow, you know? If we're having another cow, I mean, somebody will take our cow, you know, in our area, but I quit, I quit Delfield in 2019 and I've been there full time since then. And we've had a crew, we've been in our new building.
Okay, so it may have been prior to you, but I know for a fact that Jones will have the same problem with some of the others.
Yeah, at one point, yes, our video.
So, can we fairly say that, what would have happened if we'd have done it then? You know, and you would be, you'd have came in that position as, as a captain or whatever with low or no funding? What would you have done?
I don't know, we'd have to, you know?
Well, you'd have came to us and asked us for money.
Well, yeah, definitely.
So, that's what thirded?
Man, I've done it once before and then a year, a year ago.
But I think, you know, I personally don't know what the answer is, but, you know, and I don't know that they had the same problem that, that you guys had four years ago, whatever it was. But they very well may have, they may not have the people to run.
Yes, you're very true, but getting EMTs and people to run is hard. Especially if you don't pay them, you know? This day and time, you don't even pay to do what you do. Very few departments have volunteers.
So, you're talking about the western end of campus, I call it. That's what Thomas Walker's from, is EMTs. And you got three there, but, you know, they, they don't call all the time, everything's like, I mean, it's, it's not the fault of people down there. I realize you all come down here, Charles, I see you a lot. But if you don't have these people, they have to go to school, they got to pay for this training. It's hard to get somebody to, as you said, without being paid to, to do this.
You're right.
And, but I can't see cutting funding for, for us or Key Oak or whoever, whatever, you know, because it's not their problem.
Well, we've got one that's been 90 days or so, I believe, without making a call. So, at what point do you cut the funding up? How many quarters have to go by without them making a single call before you say you don't really need as much money as somebody that's making a lot of calls? And I'm like Mr. Leonard, I don't know exactly what the right answer is, but I know that there's some, some point at which you shouldn't have a quarter billion dollar ambulance that the county paid for if you're not going to run the thing. You know, and I don't know what that line is, but I think when you go 90 days without making a call, you shouldn't get as much as somebody that's making six or eight calls a day.
Well, I can see so. Now, what about, I'm not sure about this, I'm not asking enough questions about, does each department go through a full audit yearly? Do they have an audit yearly?
Not that I worry.
No, I don't think.
And there again, I would never be willing to just keep dishing out more money until a department is audited because you don't know where the money goes. That, I mean, that's, that's where I stand on that, you know, just keep passing out money because, just because Mr. Ed says he paid so-and-so crew this amount of money. I mean, where's the proof in that?
On ours, we, Dane, or Dane Pogge does all our taxes and all our stuff, so, all in favor of.
Now, she can only do what you write down, whoever, whoever's taking care of that, she can only do what you all write down, take care of, I think she can't.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's where I, you know, that's where I want to put my two cents worth in first, I think, you know, that, that's a great start, is, is to have, have an audit per apartment. And then we can kind of figure out then, you know? There may be, there may be those that are not willing to do it.
Do you have any idea what an audit for, what it costs?
$3,000.
$3,000?
$3,000. Looking, we had our previous captain, Lee, we looked into it and we charged $3,000.
I'm surprised you can get an audit for $3,000.
Yeah, that's pretty cheap.
That was five years ago.
Oh, well. They've gone up, we just deal with it.
It's my organization.
$5,000.
Oh, sir.
Who were you going to contact to do that audit?
I don't know, I wanted to tell you, so I don't know, I just want, Richard Garrett was in trouble then, that's what you told me.
This is a topic we're well aware of and we have talked many, many hours about trying to find a solution for it and it's something we're still working on. We know you're having a field and we're not trying to mislead anybody, but, you know, we've got a budget, we get.
Oh, I understand.
And our revenues are way down, so.
Actually, why I kind of suggest you might do $10 a year, you know? If you could do something like that, let it be known or whatever, however you have to work, whatever, but just not deal, you know, if y'all look into it, whatever.
That couldn't be done until next year, too.
Well, I'm not sure you can impose a fee just for EMS use. Now, you may, you may tag an existing revenue and have a portion of that designated to EMS, fire, emergency, whatever you want, whatever you want to call it. Years ago, we're going back to the aces, there was a time when the vehicle license plate was tagged as to provide funding for fire rescue, but then over a period of time, probably within 10 years, it just became a general, general revenue with no restrictions of use. But you can tax or things like that, or increases in taxes. Now, to say a $10, a $10 per whatever household or whatever, that, I don't know of statute or authority that, that you can impose that, I'd have to look at that. Now, you could increase real estate or in, in the real property tax or increase personal property tax and inherently designate so many cents of that to that purpose and distribute funds for that purpose.
If I may, what is, and that's one of the reasons, like, you know, you brought up, you know, you brought up a suggestion, that's one of the reasons we wanted a couple of you guys to come in for that.
Yes.
Force them inside because, and, and, you know, another opinion I have, it's all in mind, but you would like that, that these captains of these departments, if knowingly that they're not running calls and they know they're not going to have a crew to run call anytime in the near future, you know, they should do the right thing and just go ahead and turn in their badge and go ahead and move the equipment to support somebody is running calls where it's needed.
I agree. You know, and, and again, we, I spoke to Sydney a month ago, I mean, I want the county to think about it, but, I mean, I think the county can run very sufficiently on three, three basis of counting. I mean, I want the county to think about it, but, I mean, I think the county can run very sufficiently on three, three bases of a county. But maybe that's something to look at in the future, you know what I'm saying?
Three rescue.
In our call volume, it's still a whole county's way down, I mean, it's not like it was when we had Big Stone Hospital, nobody would call them, because they didn't want to drive. Now, you got the hospital right here, somebody driving themselves. I mean, that's just like, last night, we, we got a deposit in our bank account for six dollars and seven cents for calls. I tell you what insurance companies play us. Now, I mean, we, at this time last year, we were running a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty calls. We, last month, we ran eighty-two. And that's about what Pennington's running. But still, you got Lakeville, I would overhead, you're planning a crew forty-four seconds a day. And we don't have no one together than what you all knew was in our little insurance company. The backs up, you know, Pennington's got town money. I went to our town, John, when I asked for ten thousand dollars, they were something like it was nothing to them. But he didn't wanna discuss it.
Are you suggesting, though, if you had three in the county, where would those three be? And then, are you suggesting it be paid?
I mean, you know, I think at that point, you could get enough, you know?
I don't know, I'm just...
Or if you had four, you leave the main ones here, you know, us, Tom Walker, and if Tom Walker gets some crews going, Pennington, us, and Kiok, because like I said, Kiok, I have nothing against them. You call them out in the middle of the night, they're gonna go to you, or they're coming back to have you. Well, that's right. You know, they still get a big call back. But you got, when one of them lower range, I can remember records I got on my phone, I take them an hour. Hour and twenty minutes waiting, and you can't get there. But you wanna sit and wait an hour for somebody to get to the building, protect the call?
I'd give the call a go.
What's your suggestion on how we provide the... And, and I guess I might hear from Adam on this too, but some people just don't have the availability to get as many calls because of where they are, right? Kiok, kind of that corner, so they're not gonna, they're never gonna get forty-one percent because of where they're located.
Yeah.
You're centrally located, so it's a little easier for you. What's your all's, uh, opinion on how it's split the money?
All right, I'm Adam Shager, I'm the captain of Kiok. Now, I'm speaking just on, on supporting my agency, all right? Yes, there are issues, but cut money for people, for call, low call volume is not right. So, we're an opposite, we're volunteers. We don't want people to get sick, we don't want calls. For like Chester, who's paying for it, they want calls. But you, I don't wanna penalize us because we have a soft, uh, a low call volume, but we are available all the time. So, I mean, how you, how it look at now is going on call volume is not fair to the, us, who has always run the low, the low volume calls.
Do you think a small percentage of it should be based on volume, or you should give a hundred percent to everybody equally?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, it's how you have what we're doing there, because, uh, the place that said that you get seventy-five, I think you got fifteen thousand, seventy-five hundred you can get, but the rest of us will be divided on who runs the most calls.
But we haven't said anything yet.
I'm just saying, I just, what examples are we getting?
I guess what I'm saying is...
I'm not a favor of nothing of, on call volume.
So, you'd give fifteen to everybody, forget the bottom?
I said, I'm only, I'm only supporting my agency.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't know, here my different opinions, but like I said, but I mean, I don't want it to penalize my agency because we run less calls.
You know, it's, in my opinion, that it's necessary to have rescues while they're in Kiok.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Way no pain to get.
And like I said, you know, our call volume has dropped almost eighty-five percent since Pennington's come aboard. So, I mean, we're go, we go everywhere. We have been over Kentucky, we have been in West County, we have been to Jasper. We have went out through Kiok, went through Big Stone, I mean, went out through Appalachian, went through Big Stone to go to Jasper. I mean, we go anywhere, we don't care, but I'm just saying, that our call volume is low.
What would y'all think about leaving the current status quo, but add a pool of money to it for call volume? Give everybody the fifteen thousand like we've been doing for two years, and then add fifteen, or twenty, or whatever, and then base it twice a year, look, look at the previous half a year, and give them their percentage of that money based on volume. That way, everybody's getting more than they were last year, but there is some component that's based on volume.
Well, I mean, I just don't know, but if you're just saying too, I mean, size call volume availability, might be something to look into, I mean, just kind of the...
I'm saying actual calls, if you went out, if you responded to a call, it counts. Is that when you say forty-one percent, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Well, he's talking like, just go ahead and do the fifteen thousand.
Yeah, I mean...
And set a separate pool, right?
Do the fifteen thousand like you got last year, and then add fifteen, or twenty, or twenty-five, whatever, and base, and, and disperse it based on volume.
I don't know what y'all think, but I think that's a good idea. But, I mean, you take, I don't know what his insurance runs, mine's almost fourteen thousand, for just car insurance and work and call.
I would agree, but, but like I say, once we start, once, once we see some, uh, some clear audits.
We could give them, or are you saying go ahead and give all fifteen thousand now, but don't give them?
So, I mean, I do have a question, so how would I know the budget asked what July won? So, what, how was it working in the budget? Was it, I mean, when it did pass, was it just a flat fifteen thousand, or was it, that you talk about?
It's a pool of, fifteen times one, six, seven, whatever it is, what is it?
Six, ninety thousand. So, there was no breakdown this year, who gives what is the flat fee?
No, no, we're just trying to get, get general talks, a, a general discussion of, of, you know, what can be done to fix the problem. And I don't know that, that add money to the departments that should run it fixes the problem, because the departments that are not running, they're still not gonna run calls, I mean, we gotta fix that first.
But they wouldn't get any of that money, the extra money?
What do y'all use money for?
Ninety, like I said, ninety-nine percent of mine goes to our vehicle insurance and work and call. And the rest of those wages are, they got fuel, we, we spend fifteen hundred, twenty thousand dollars a month on fuel.
Could we get a, do we have a unique location, do we have a, any kind of breakdown of what the expenses are?
Do y'all turn that in there? Uh, do y'all little turn in what your expenses from the year was to get the county money? Did you just?
No, where did you go to turn in fifteen thousand dollars in that? I literally turned in our authority church and work and call for like three pages of...
I thought that was...
Three months of it, wow.
Four or fifteen years, I don't think.
I mean, it's gone in a heartbeat.
Well, if, if you go on call volume, you, you know, with that said, we totally pretty well know that this department here is running forty-one percent of calls. And they would get most of that extra couple of money, because you know, they're burning more gas.
And to that point, to give you an idea, well, not gonna lay up, thanks for all, if they wanna run seven, eight percent, something would be done here. Or, you know, you got Tom Walker, or whoever, running just a small percentage of calls. Well, we'll have to figure out, is that, is their area, they're not taking the call, or is that just...
Well, let me, let me break this down, get back to what Adam said. If you didn't have paid crews, how many, what percentage would you all be running?
If we didn't have paid...
If you did not have paid crews, what percentage would you be running?
It'd be very low. Well, like I said, again, if you don't, this day and time, people go have a job, you know what I mean? And if you, and volunteer part, and you ask guys, there's about gone.
That is an issue, yes.
You can't ask somebody to go spend three, four, five thousand dollars, just in school, being an EMT and volunteer like you used to. Put it right out there.
What that breaks down, what that breaks down to is, is we're doing it for money. We're not, we're not, we're not doing it as a, as a public service to, you know, for the well-being of our, our, our people in our county. You know, and there's no money involved, and, you know? Isn't that what, kinda what you're saying, though? I mean, that most of the people are just gonna say, oh, I don't care if I ain't got no money, or no money involved, I go, go help nobody.
That's, that's what's coming forward, the more and more, I mean...
Well, I mean, they didn't create that problem, but they didn't create society forms.
Some, in some ways, it was created, I mean, without, they're saying, and I, I, I say this with, uh... Out of respect for them too, but, you know, I guess there should have been a lot of talk back many years ago about trying to get this problem resolved before, you know, we start paying people. If you can't, and, and just like you, I, I mean, if, if you go to the store, if you can't afford to buy something in there, then you don't buy it. So, if you can't afford to pay somebody, then, you know, why would you start program if you, if you know you can't afford to do it?
Well, what if everybody quits paying, and nobody wants to take a call, what, what's that?
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what it's boiled down to now. That's what it's already boiled down to, we have, uh, one department in whole county that's not.
Yeah, I guess I'm saying that the cat's already out of the bag now, what, what do we do moving forward? Not what caused the issue, but how are we gonna get more calls made faster? And what's the incentive to make calls if it's not money? I don't know how, how else you incentivize them to make the calls.
If Pennington's gentleman long once got paid EMTs. Tom Walker does.
Tom Walker does, I think, during the day, or did have during the day, I don't know. Last I had known Tom Walker, he's got an EMT at Millsboro, works for Millsboro, something like that way.
That's just JR Long, he, he works for the role.
No, it's another EMT, not JR.
Wow, that guy comes out of Millsboro.
Yeah, and that's what I was talking about, the other day for an incident, they had a, a wreck, ATV, I was gonna talk about. Was thirty minutes for an EMT being on site. And one week it's been on fifteen.
Well, see, you just got Pat Brown and Junior, and we got three EMTs down, that's Pat, Junior, James, Steve James.
We're gonna sell you guys. We're running twenty-four full EMTs, five days a week.
I didn't know if them people gonna pay that hard.
I know their day shift does.
Well, that day shift, that girl down there, she's a driver, she's not an EMT, she's just a driver. And you still rely on those three, and the guy you're talking about over in Millsboro? I'm checking that, but I, I mean, I'm not doubting it, but I didn't think they got paid.
Yeah, I know their day shift did, 'cause...
Steve James and Junior get paid if they come in.
The one that was on our day shift, I can't hear her, she was Pennington now, April.
Yeah, she left, 'cause she wasn't getting paid.
She wasn't, they offered them money initially.
Went, went getting paid.
She told us that she left 'cause they, they paid you off your insurance.
Been driving, running down.
When Josh is off, when it's not with Pennington, or very blue moon, other than when he's off, you know, you'll get somebody. I think he picked up with one alley, he's got a young girl that just found class there, like...
Well, I think we talked about trying to get a committee together, which, you know, a couple, and I guess these two right here would probably be the... That, well, that would probably be the two probably to use, I would like to, you know, a couple of people up here to, uh, try to get the problem resolved, you know, going forward.
I think something that ought to be discussed, chiefs and captains, but...
Are you all still even having them?
I ain't had one in what, six months, seven months, last November, who's the chair? I don't even know.
It's young.
Someone needs to come lead it, discuss this.
But I guess the question is, what do we do in the meantime? Now, I, I hate to keep the status quo, it's, it's not working. Whether we add something to the pool, or we take a quarter of it and divide it based on call volume or something, but... There's gotta be something said for somebody that's making such a large volume of the calls, and if you, and I'm off the top of my head, something that are not making any calls.
Well, I think you need to do like Diddy sitting there, and you're committed, get with these guys. Diddy, he's in rescue stuff, you're into that, and I don't know about Larry, no, you're there. Get three of you to get, get with these people, and see what kind of solution you're coming with.
Yeah, I don't, like I say, nothing's gonna change on this year's budget deal, because we've already paid. I mean, the only thing we can do is amend it and add some money for call volume, that's the only thing that can be done, I mean... There's nothing going to be done for sure.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I don't personally agree with like Adam, but cutting his. You know, because if you call Adam, he's gonna be there. You know, he's one that don't be there, he's one that needs to be, you know? Just because he's got a little call volume, don't mean he's not gonna show up. If you need him to a lot more than you, but he's gonna be there.
Well, you need to find out why they don't show up, wants to be on, if you're bossing here, you know, I'm gonna just keep telling my Tom Walker, I listen to him familiar with it. I don't know if they have a volunteer, now, the fire department are covered up, I know they've got a volunteer. Rescue, I don't know, uh, I don't see that many there, I don't know if you have any volunteers for rescue. I know the fire department's covered up, I know that.
Yeah, rescue's getting harder to get, if you want to do that.
So, you know, I, I make the decision, if you don't have volunteers, you don't have...
Yeah, I'd like to say, I, I, I'm wanting not to make, making a decision to add no money tonight until we, we get some more clarification. I stand on it right now, until we get some more hip hop, some more discussion.
So, then, I guess the question is whether or not to disperse the rest of the money now, equally?
Yes, yes, till you come up with a solution.
Well, they still gotta pay their insurance regardless.
They gotta pay their insurance. Before they make a call, before they dump, you're still gonna pay it. So, till you come up with a solution, I say, yes, give them. What do you say, Larry?
I agree. I agree with Diddy, there's nothing we can do about it tonight, we're gonna have to have a deeper discussion about it. And get a committee together, and meet with the chiefs and the captains.
Well, we've been kicking around this idea for a year or so, so if we're gonna make a committee, if we're gonna go ahead and do it, we'll be talking about it in a year from now, or somebody will be.
Yeah, I found, been on it.
But Diddy be on, Chief be on?
I, I'm gonna get a risk alert, it's on the chiefs and captains, drew a rip on that.
Would you two be willing to, to, to serve as a committee for the...
Yes.
My concern about that is, one for ideal, January one, who's gonna be left on that board? And when next, uh, on the next, uh, this time you're going on a budget, who's gonna be on the board? Diddy, so you don't have a meeting to discuss all this plan, but you got four more people to be sitting on the board? I don't, I thought it might concern you, we do all this work, and if you get four more people on the board, they might like have different opinion.
Well, that'll take you to a budget time, I'd say, before we can do it anyway, so... There'll be another, there, there'll be another new member that be on the committee too, so... I can't foresee, I can't really foresee making a decision for next year's budget.
But, I mean, I don't wanna do all this work and get something going, then, January one, we have a... Four members sitting on here, and walking on through the process again, I mean, that's my only concern.
Well, you never know what forty-four members are gonna do, so...
That's what I'm saying.
I know where I stand on the issue, but I don't know where forty-four members are gonna sit, they may have total different ideas than I guess. So, that could happen, I mean, regardless, I mean, regardless.
Like I said, I'm, I'm open to anything, and I'll do anything I can do.
Well, you and I talk a lot, but we keep in communication, let it slide. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch. Anybody else for public expression?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Michelle Bridge from Social Services. I'm trying not to take too much of your time, I'm here with a request on behalf of my employees. Basically, my request is that you all do some evaluation on our HVAC system. And I will tell you, and I guess Angie probably gets where I called several times a week, we had at least a quarter of our office that has not had air conditioning in over three weeks. One office in particular, on one side of the office, was in the eighties on Friday, it was eighty-four degrees in several different offices. It's very difficult to keep people happy in that environment. The new air conditioning unit, which you all preciously put in for us last year, has blown fuses four separate times since May of this year, when I've been keeping track of it. Even when it works properly, the interior offices are, there's a marked change in temperature, they're hot all year long. They're seventy-eight to eighty degrees year round. And I'm just asking for you to look into this and see if there's something that we can do systematically, excuse me. It seems like we keep putting band-aids on it, and I'm not criticizing the work that anybody has done, but I think this has been going on for a really long time. This building is not all that old. I've seen things, minutes and memos from ten years ago, when they were dealing with exactly the same issue. Our server room, was it two Sundays ago, Dave came in on a Sunday, the air conditioning unit in the server room spilled water all over a bunch of computer equipment, and there's electrical outlets right below it, and there was water running down it, which obviously is a fire hazard. So I'm concerned about my employees, and I'm concerned about the building. Thank you so much.
That air conditioner was put in last year, shouldn't have had some power, do you?
It was broken, so we're kicking, they were not able to get fifty-amp breakers, we did get one Friday, they installed that Friday afternoon.
Yes.
The unit's working fine this week, but you're still saying that that area is still hot?
That area is improved, it's the.
Now, there's still one end that has a extension valve that is bad. What the administrator told me was Friday, is that of all the parts that they're trying to get for units right now, the expansion valve is the hardest one to get. But they have had it on order since
It's been at least, well.
Two weeks ago yesterday, it's been on order. They're just waiting for that valve to come in, and they can, should be able to get that one back up and going. The big one was, they did know that it was tripping the breaker. It was an outside, the outside breaker to the end, and it was tripping it sporadically. It was, you know, was constantly, it was tripping. They were able to get a fifty-amp breaker installed Friday afternoon, so that should resolve the issue with the breaker on that, because that's what it needed, they just haven't been able to get it.
But it does seem like, I think you'd agree, that we have a lot of HVAC problems in that building. I don't know what the issue is. It's not that old of a building, it just concerns me, that continues to.
It's a building old enough that the original units are worn out, or wearing out. With that twenty-ton unit that was replaced, I think there's two other smaller units that have already been replaced. I mean, you know, typically, as long as you can repair them, and they're not beyond being repaired, that's what we try to do. Any of them are subject to failure, that's like the wall-mounted unit. That's a split duct system, or ductless system, that's just wall-mounted in the IT room. They were there earlier that weekend, when they were checking on the other, they checked that unit, but he said, you know, I understand. He said it only takes a day for one of those, you know, malfunctioning, having water dripping out of it, that it's gonna wet forward and do some damage, so that's just the nature of those units. They do not have drain pans, they do not have, I don't know that they, I'm not sure if they have condensation drains, I'm not sure.
They do.
Okay.
But it backs up all the time, it's like a sludgy material, and when the water comes out, it's flat.
That's typical for.
Well, and it runs down the wall, which gets in the drywall that's right there, and then it ran out on the carpet, but people are breathing that after a while.
So are you saying the only thing wrong with the new unit is blowing fuses?
That's my understanding, it's the breaker, and that has been replaced.
And you're saying even when the breakers are in, that it's still hotter than the rest of the building?
Well, that middle hallway, which is where we're talking about, that seems to be working fine, the if you face going into the building, the left-hand hallway has been out since July the sixteenth. And it is hard to keep, there's twenty people that work in that hallway. When it's eighty-four degrees, it's hard to keep people working when it's that hot and no any kind of ventilation. I'm not saying the county administrators don't be responsive, they come down when I call, but it just seems like it's over and over again the same issues.
So what's the answer to my question? Is the new heat duct working besides the breakers, or is it not?
The new heat duct, since Friday, apparently has been working.
Before that, were you having issues with it?
Yes, sir.
Beyond the breakers?
I don't know what's causing it, but it has, I know it has gone out a number of times, we've had leakage leakage from the ceiling in that same office that was used to be.
That was a different unit that the drain pan was on the run.
The breaker issue, is that just not having the right breaker put in, or is there something called?
They were having to put forty-amp breakers in, and they called for a fix, but they didn't able to get the fix.
I'm just asking, I appreciate your time, if there's any questions I may answer, I'll be happy to.
We'll work on it, get it taken care of.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Public express. If not, our next thing only, it did, is approval of the minutes of the July eighteenth, one hundred and thirty.
Mr. Chairman, I know that on page two, it had the one depot. I'm not sure what it's supposed to say towards the top of the page.
I have one with me. I have a copy of them with me.
Well, that's, we get rid of the one depot, and on page eighteen, I think I asked that my office number be added to the website for five to five. Other than that, I make a motion to approve.
With those amendments?
Yes.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, in discussion? If none, all in favor, sixty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, on finance, the supplemental appropriations. Next, ring, is approval of this first one. Motion, please. I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion, it's a three discussion. If not, all in favor, sixty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, on finance, the supplemental appropriations. Entertained motion to approve the supplemental appropriations.
Chairman, these are re-appropriations, these are fund balances that carry forward to the next fiscal year. They're specific to in use, one is drug court, one is the Commonwealth Turned Collections program, one is in the Sheriff's Department from donations, one, two of them are three, three of them are fines and forfeitures. Next, there's, and the final one is an appropriation. The drug court appropriation did not get added to the budget before it was adopted, in the documents, so I'll take care of that.
Motion to approve? So, I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, in discussion? If none, all in favor, sixty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, is old business, county code, recalcification.
That is moving forward with the end, I don't have an estimated completion date, but it's moving forward.
Next, is sugar run, convenience center lease agreement.
I have a proposal from the landlord on that, with a request to take that up in close session.
Next, is old drugstore and register parking lots.
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Collins on that, because he met with contractors on most of those.
I met with the register parking lot, but.
I thought you talked to Greg.
I talked to him, but we didn't.
Okay.
Neither.
You talked to him.
Greg last recommended to let, what do we call them now, transfer station? What do we call them now?
Public Works.
Public Works. He said we should let the Public Works tear the entrance out, not necessarily for purposes of widening entrances, but because those two spots, the easternmost spots, if there's a long vehicle parked in the second or third spot, you have a hard time getting over next to Church Street. That makes sense, because the way that Mick Kerr comes in there, he said, tear all that out, so when you do pull in, you can back in or pull into that spot, which makes sense, I've parked there before, and it is hard to get in there.
You've got the concrete, plus there's railroad ties in part of that that block you from getting to it.
Yeah, and the wall plate, yeah, we talked about railroad.
Right, yeah.
So anyway, he recommended that Public Works tear that out, and that get that ready for them to pave, or somebody to pave when they pave the, where the jail was. And then on the register parking lot, I met with Austin Glass there, he recommended that we get a pipe that's big as will fit in that hole, and not to neck it down any at all. And he recommended that we put a pipe in the bottom of it, like a twelve-inch, that shot the water out into the cave, but I talked to Gary Collinsworth about that, he said he felt like it was dangerous to get down in there, so I think he was okay with getting a bigger pipe, like, did you talk to them?
The thirty-minute pipe will fit in there easy, and there'd be less rock to fill in every angle, but that would allow you access to drop someone down in there, if there was a problem in the future, and still be protected.
And that was Austin's concern, was being able to get somebody in there. He said it may be thirty years from now, but you're gonna get sealed down in there, and somebody's gonna have to go down in there with a shovel, and if you've got a twenty-four-inch pipe or an eighteen, you're limited on who can go down there. So I make a motion that we go allow Mr. Collinsworth to go forward with this plan, subject to putting as big a pipe in as he can.
Second. Motion and a second, in discussion? All in favor, sixty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
What about the drugstore parking lot?
Well, that issue, you said that, he said, he recommended that we allow them to tear that entrance out for them to come in now. It was his suggestion to repave the entire lot, or just fix the low areas. I was thinking he said something about it probably needing to be whole plane paved.
I think he did actually, but me, I think we had to go up to procurement, if we're going over twenty-five thousand on that, so. I can't weigh in on that because of conflict, but I think we should get the Public Works Department to go ahead and clear that out, so you can park in those end spots.
We can cut that out, but we'll have to probably use some gravel field temporarily on the backside next to the post office, because once that's cut out, it's gonna leave a little bit of a drop-off there, we can it can be paved to rain up to it, but we can probably use some stone to level that out a little bit too, temporarily.
What do y'all think about the E. Fine, you need a motion on it, or is it?
Well, I thought that's well, that was on the register, that you did the other.
Okay.
Yeah, if you don't care, make a motion on that.
I made a motion that we allow the Public Works Department to correct the parking lot at the drugstore for later, and take out the front entrance.
Second. Motion and a second, in discussion? If none, all in favor, sixty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, is donated real estate.
I think the county attorney told me before meeting, she has the deeds prepared, we just need to do a final check, copy everything on them. And then there's one that you said you hadn't been able to do title search, it was not part of the original ones that were sent.
Yeah, that's correct, the other deeds are completed, we just need to obtain signatures at this point.
And then with the one that she hasn't got prepared yet, I know it in the obituaries last week, one of the heirs on that passed away, so we'll have to run that information down for heirs of that one, to see what needs to be, who needs to be included.
So on the others, who's getting the signature?
We'll, I've got addresses for each other, we can circulate.
Okay, next is employee phones.
We transferred service on thirteen today, county employees. Got four more on our side to move, one of the employees, one of them is in, was in academy training, and has their phone with him, so we couldn't get that changed over today. We will be, the sheriff's office has already decided they want to go ahead and move. We'd already initiated these first fifteen or so, and AT&amp;T said it would be easier just go ahead and complete that, and then add in the sheriff's office. So we talked about that this afternoon, so we'll start that conversion over the next couple of weeks, as quickly as they can get the phones in, we should be able to transfer them over.
Okay.
Thank you. Hey, will they get the, the sheriff's department, will they get that first net price for that?
Yes, the first net, the first net is a band that is built into the phone, and that allows that. She had some questions today about the laptop units in cars, so they were looking at it this afternoon, like, so.
All right, moving on to new business, board appointments, building code appeals. Motion to table. Second. Motion and a second, in discussion? All in favor, sixty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Next is lunch and fine office home use. I make a motion to table that, I've not been able to get a hold of the principal at Lehigh to get a recommendation, plus group that started last week, I think.
Second.
Motion and a second? In discussion? All in favor, sixty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is Southwest Virginia nine-one-one standards committee.
Make a motion to table that.
I've got this.
This day is, I'm psyched that he has a nice meeting about it, I see.
Got a motion to table? I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, sixty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Map plotter quotes. Next, on new business.
We budgeted for the purchase of a new map plotter, scanner, copier in the office of the Commissioner of Resinues, since that's where the GIS system is maintained. It would be used to generate maps and other items for the GIS for nine-one-one mapping, zoning, et cetera. Quotes were obtained from five different sources with the results, this is thirty-six inch wide HP-designed jet plotter. Cryacity blueprint supplied, gave two different prices, one for the plotter to be dropped shipped at sixty-eight ninety-five, one for it to be delivered with assembly set up in the printing head alignment, at seventy-four ninety-five. The other four are all online, one from Office Depot, one from Staples, and one from Amazon, and one from HP, all of these include shipping. They range in price from seventy-six ninety-five, down to sixty-seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. There's two quotes at the sixty-seven twenty-five, one from Amazon, one directly from HP, and I would recommend it be done direct from HP. I also talked to staff in that office about the setup of the printer. Basically consists of just mounting the stand that it's on, shouldn't be an issue, and the printing head alignment and everything is basically automatic. If there's an issue, we'll go back to HP.
If that thing, something happens to it, who can work on it?
HP. HP. I mean, if we bought it from a vendor at a higher price, whether HP uses them as an HP repair vendor or not, you're going to have to notify a few of the partners and get them to designate a repair entity or have it shipped back to them.
So you're recommending the HP?
Direct ship from HP.
Okay, I'll entertain the motion for the HP. So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? If none, all in favor, signify and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any vote? Next is electric poll books. That do you want to come up?
Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
Yeah, do you want to speak to first or...
Well, electronic poll books or poll pads are just electronic poll books. And they simplify and speed up the checking process. Where with paper poll box books, sometimes the numbers might get marked wrong. A person's name might get marked wrong. And with the electronic poll books, they use, they can scan driver's licenses and voter cards and that does a fast accurate check in. Electronic poll books will alert, will alert the election officials if a person has already voted, has already cast an in-person ballot during the voting period. With electronic poll books, voters can also be looked at by the first name, last name, or date of birth. If a voter goes to a wrong precinct, there can be a search done on the electronic poll books by the election officials that will tell them where they need to go to vote. And voters can check their vote record like one or two days after the election in 30 days. And we get a lot of complaints on that because they want to know where their vote record is when most of it is everybody else in the state of Virginia besides the Lebanon County county. So, and that's about the...
I have that.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, how many, I mean, you got down to 35. How many are you going to put in each precinct?
Two per precinct and two per precinct. They always want a backup.
You say you had to show your driver's license and a voter card?
No, I didn't say you had to. I said, "They could scan them and if, like if you show them, you've got to show some form of ID."
Right.
Most people show their driver's license. So they can just scan that driver's license and it just pops up Larry Mosley with your address. And it gives you your number and then you just go on and vote instead of having to flip through paper and try to find a name.
Anybody else got any questions?
How many precincts are there, 17 or 16?
We have 16 plus absentee. We don't need that absentee, that's done here.
Is there some storage that these things do that is being done by paper now? Who voted? Is there a storage mechanism to these that you're going for? Is that one of the benefits of them, storage of records or not?
No. It just, in the last 30, their poll books have to be obtained in the post office 30 days after the election. So we can't begin to give those records until I get that time. Which now these, these poll pads will have two thumb drives and one will stay with us and one will go to the clerk of court. And we can go ahead and upload vote records instead of having to wait on the paper polls.
Do you know what the Lebanon counties are that don't have these?
I don't get regular with me, but I could get it to you.
Do you know if any of them are local, South West?
No, I don't. Most of Southwest Virginia does have it though.
The training that's down here for $2,500, I think that's, yeah, per day. Is that, somebody going to be here on the ground or is that somebody on Zoom or...
They will be here and they will train as the election officials.
Okay.
Prior to the election.
The iPad Pro, is there a reason that we have to buy the iPad Pro instead of just the standard iPad?
Well, we go with this vendor and that's what they, what they need.
Is, on the software itself, is there anything that requires, for lack of better words, such a big hardware unit? I mean, do we have to have a Pro? For example, I talked to the school system a little bit about it. The iPads they use are not the Pros and they're paying $699 a piece for them. These are quoted at $1,695. Is there anything that we're doing with them that would be more interactive than kids, you know, using the software that they're using?
I'm not that faddie about that. You know, we all have certain vendors that we can buy from. There's not that many vendors though. I think they're all about the same cost and you...
That's up to Bush and I.
Is there any yearly recurring costs associated with it?
I think there is, what, the software?
Yeah, the software license and maintenance fee is $52.50 a year, $150 per unit. So it's $52.50 a year on the electronic poll books and another $1,000 for the ballot printers.
That's for the first two years?
Yes.
And then it can go up?
Then it can be adjusted after that.
Is there no way to do it without going through a vendor that has this?
They have to be approved by state board elections to provide the equipment. They have to admit.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah, they have to be approved by state board elections. Which means they have demonstrated and submitted their equipment to them and shown, you know, failure rates and everything else to the point that the state's satisfied that they will serve the purpose and be secure during the election.
Where are they located?
Where are?
This particular vendor.
A vendor?
This one's St. Louis Missouri.
St. Louis Missouri, yes. They have, they cover Scott County, this vendor does.
Was it put out for bid?
No, we're exempt from bids. I mean, like I say, you have to be approved by state board elections in order to be a vendor. And I guess that's why it costs them much.
Did you give them a more price?
No, I didn't. Because I like to go with what women are not like to go. But these people have been tried and proven they're good vendors, so...
Any more questions? If none, thank you, Paxi. I'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove of electronic poll books.
So moved to approve.
Have a motion by here, second. Second, motion and second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to have a little more discussion about it, Mr. Chairman. Is there a way that we could test this out? Here's my reservation, a few, one month. We just had the discussion about EMT getting $15,000 a piece, $90,000 spent on EMT countywide. And then we're looking at spending $76,000 for poll books that are used on election day. And it's hard to get any more money for EMT and so many other things that we need. So it's hard to justify comparing electronic poll books to that. And no offense to you all for what you do, but that's a hard one to make swallow. And then I did a little bit of research on it independently and the first thing, and I Googled, I think I Googled the actual company. But one of the first things that popped up was a news story out of Richmond from last year saying that there were four counties that had long lines for voting last year because these poll books malfunctioned. So I'm a little hesitant to jump all in and spend $76,000 on something that may work well and it may not. I think if we're going to do it at all, I think we should probably take one precinct in each district and give it a try if we can do that. I mean, maybe it's an all or nothing thing, but to me it's a little bit of a risky endeavor, especially when you run four half billion dollar budgets.
Secretary for Electoral Board would like to speak.
Lori Rouse, I just got something to kind of add to that. You are not running for reelection, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you're not going to have an issue with electronic poll book next, this time election. But what if we get your precincts messed up and we have to go back and count? It takes us six weeks. You see what I'm saying? Electronic poll books would benefit us so much for the fact of long lines waiting to be voted, to be checked in simply because of identification, as well as the new machines that you all graciously gave us in the past to use that we love. I mean, we actually do, they're awesome. But my thought is it's really going to benefit everything in Lincoln as far as elected offices go. We have the storage for it now that we're in another building. We don't have any issues with that. We don't have any issues with mold anymore like we did before. So I really would appreciate you guys as far as the board goes also, besides Paxi and Teresa, of course, to consider this. Thank you for letting me speak.
If I may just in response, I never really hear any complaints about y'all having long lines. And maybe you can do, not just miss it, but I used to vote at Jonesville, which I guess is one of the busier ones. But I mean, I've never had anybody say that we don't do a good job with elections.
I've been there because I was an election official for many, many years before I was on the electoral board. And I've seen Woodway, for instance, Mr. Mosley, you know what the turnout is up there especially. But at the door and we're panicking at seven o'clock going, or at 10 minutes or seven going, "How many more is out there? Do we need to start, do we need to start getting them right? The way to have to do the numbers and the tickets and such for after hour voting because they were in line, the situation that we have to go through." But it has happened in the past. And I'm sure you've just probably not been there at a time at Jonesville. But yeah, it is, it is often.
And I'm also concerned too with whether or not this will be any faster. I know in theory it is, but I'm guessing that there's some learning curve where we may have people that don't get adequate training or whatever and that it doesn't work like planned. I mean, just like the news article I was mentioning, it didn't work in 12, four counties last year. So I'm a little...
See, you're always going to have the negative issues, news stories, I mean, but...
But not just the fast, excuse me, not just how fast it might help us get us in, but the accuracy. We are not going to have to constantly check what number you have in your book, how many have voted, are we off by one? Oh my gosh, this has happened. It happens more than you know. And we're sitting there struggling trying to check people in, keep voting, and find that person that didn't get scanned or not scanned in the book, that didn't get noted in the book as a voter. So it does happen quite often. I know of twice that I've had to go back before when I worked at Woodway because that was used to precincts when I was at and had to find mistakes like that.
I don't want y'all to think this is anything personal.
Oh, no.
I know I love you, I like, I love you. I'm just, I don't spend my own money easily and spend the county's people's money.
Did you read any uplifting reports or did you just read the negatives?
That was all I saw as far as the reports on it.
And you know, we're always excited, technology, can we go a step further? Because that tickles us a damn.
And see me, I'm afraid of it.
Yeah.
Technology, computers and stuff, this paper just doesn't fail. I trust it.
Yeah, I get that, but we've got to grow. If we're going to keep going, we've got to grow and we've got to accept them, so... But I just, I just wanted y'all to kind of hear from my aspect of it as being a worker and on the board, what the difficulties are in each situation, so...
And we're getting left behind in our training because they don't look at training for people anymore. They have paper poll books. It's all the electronic poll books and ballot on planes, so...
And we take that training class very serious because we want our election officials that we choose throughout the years to represent us on election day. We want them to have the training that they need. And I myself went up last year and learned how to do the ballot machines, how to reset the paper, how to turn them on, what happened to the power filter, how do you change your battery pack? I kind of know all that, excuse me. So I was a step ahead for a situation last year if it occurred to where our IT person couldn't get to them in time, but I might have been on that end of the county. So I'm willing to take that extra as well.
I know y'all don't want this, but is it possible to try it out in a district or a precinct or a few to see?
Not what I'm aware of. That she, she know about it, but she's not where I'm aware of.
On my part, if technology's here, we need to keep moving with it. And I agree with you 100%. I guess what's bothering me is the price. Are we sure that we can't buy the units at a better price? Or are we sure with the company that's giving us the best price?
I think so, yes. And knowing, they, they, there's a lot of, the vendor serves a lot of people in Southwest Virginia. So we, you know, we rely on each other for a lot of things. So it's just...
I'm not, that's, I'm not doubting that at all. But I also know that companies love to do business with counties and states and governments because they can always get more money for their product.
Right, but I think we've got probably the lowest price.
But do we have anything to compare it to?
Well, I don't have anything with me.
The point that Mr. Collins made about the difference in the, what was it, city control versus...
Oh, Pro Series versus, I guess they call it the standard edition or whatever.
Who, who are we buying them units from? The same people?
The company is called Knowing, yes, we're buying them.
The same company, the S's software?
Yeah.
They're probably, I'm speculating here, but they have determined which unit they feel is best suited for the software they're loading on it to handle volume, whatever. And that's all they're offering. They probably, I doubt if they give you options on which iPad is available. This is how they package theirs. It's just a packaged deal.
Or maybe it's a savings thing. I'd rather have 10% markup on $10 than a dollar. I mean, who knows?
Yeah, well, all election equipment, there's limited companies that manufacture the equipment or that produce the equipment. And then they have to be certified in every state that they sell in. So that keeps weeding the field, it cuts the field down to a small number when you get to those who are actually approved to sell it. So it automatically gives them an avenue towards higher costs. And you're dealing with an issue, election equipment's not something you buy every day. Something that hopefully is going to last you several years before it gets replaced. So, I mean, I, anything you buy in election equipment is high, I think.
That's true.
It's just the nature of the beast.
Do you know the answer to whether or not we can try it in a precinct?
I do not. I don't know election laws down to that. As far as the mechanics of the everyday implementation of elections, whether you could do paper in one precinct and electronic in another, I have no idea.
Are you aware of a code or something that specifically says you cannot try out electronic equipment? That it has to be all of them?
I don't think you'll find that in the code that you can try out.
Yeah, but I mean, the way law in general is that you can do something unless there's a law saying you can't. So if there's not anything saying we can't do a partial paper and partial electronics, then we can.
Well, you would have to get the company to agree to that.
Well, of course, they're going to say, "No, they want to sell 35 instead of four."
Well, you can get a better price when you buy 35 instead of four.
That's not a good price. It's not a good price.
What if you don't know that?
Well, I do. I've talked a little bit about iPads, it would be $1,695. My wife just bought one, $1,695.
On that, on that, though, state board certified, we have to have. Lehigh doesn't have to have state board certified iPads. Your wife didn't have to have a state board certified one. We have to have one that can't be hacked, that can't be, what's the word? You wouldn't talk about it before. I'm sorry.
We're being taught that, but we don't have another quote to compare it to, Mr. Jessis. I mean, it'd be a little easier to swallow if we had something in front of us saying, "This is the best deal out there," but it's the only deal in front of us.
Well, that's the best deal for Southwest Virginia and the electoral board and area. counties, because we have more people in Southwest Virginia that is using this company. And when you have that, then there will be a vendor somewhere within Southwest Virginia that if we need them, probably located around Bristol, Central, if we need them on election day, if they can't walk us through it, they will be here if we have a problem.
Do we know that?
Yes, we know that.
Where's the nearest vendor?
The nearest vendor? Well, they're in St. Louis, Missouri, that's where the company is, but then they will send vendors out. That's like their machines right now. We have a vendor that is, he usually stays around Abington, and if there's a problem with one of our voting machines on election day, then if he can't walk us through it, he will send somebody else.
Do we know what the amount would go up to? Do you know that you're getting a volume discount?
I don't know what you mean with a volume discount.
I mean, do you know that they're $1,695 because you're buying 35? If you bought five?
If you buy more, the more you buy, the cheaper they get.
Do you know, like, if you bought, say, six, how much the price would be?
If I bought 36?
Six.
Six, I do not.
I know election times are barmy, but I think we need to look into it a little more, check with other vendors, make sure we're making the right move. I just don't like making a quick decision about something like this with so much money. That's just my take on it.
How much time do you have? Do you need to ask your bank?
It's about 35 days until we start, 30 days. And we need it now, I mean, we need to be able to do it now.
You know, usually what happens, in business, you should get more than one price because...
Well, that's why we don't have to put out a lead for that, is because the communities and electoral boards, they are the ones that should make...
But if the vendor knows this, and knows that you're going to move them anyway, you're going to pay less price for them.
Well, I'm not going to pay any more or less than the other counties have done.
Any more discussion? I have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify the same, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you.
Next, I just want to add, this is a county request recorded regarding the line of duty and benefits.
The Nelson County Board of Supervisors is seeking support from General Assembly legislation to expand the Line of Duty Act benefits for law enforcement to include private police departments. Under current legislation, LMDA, Line of Duty Act provides benefits to eligible family members of eligible employees and volunteers that have killed in the line of duty, and to eligible employees and those disabled in the line of duty. The employers, which is Colorado, Virginia, counties, cities, and towns pay premiums to the Virginia retirement system, or to a self-funded insurance company for this coverage. Until about eight years ago, nine, this was paid by the state. At that time, General Assembly decided that they would pass that cost on to the lookout. So another one that we picked up. These premiums cover that cost. Benefits include disability, health benefits for eligible employees and volunteers and their survivors. Nelson County is making this request to include private law enforcement, based on occurrence that happened in their county. It was the Wintergreen Police Department, which is a private resort, but it is a, they have their own police department, they had an officer killed in the line of duty, and they're not eligible because basically they're private employer. It's not a state or local government employer, and they're not currently covered. From 1972 until 2012, I'm not right on the timing, the cost of benefits was paid by the state. They changed that in 2012, and in addition to the full annual premium paid for county law enforcement officers, we also paid 25% of that premium on every volunteer for fire and rescue in the county. Our total annual cost in 2012, 2013 was $37,800. In the current fiscal year, we're paying $63,500, so you can see that premium keeps going up. Expanding the program to include private police departments would spread the cost of premiums over a larger group, depending on how many private police departments opted to join. It would also increase the potential exposure for claims, which could impact the overall cost of the program and increase premiums to all lookouts. They have a proposed resolution requesting that legislature change, and your support, that's included for your review.
Does that include security governors?
I don't think so, they don't have police powers. They would have to have police power, and it'd be ridiculous. We don't have it, that I would be aware of. I'm just, I'm not aware of any of that, that would be eligible in Lee County, and again, across the state, I don't know how many there would be, and I don't know what impact it would have on our premiums, I can't say. Lee County, we did not go with self-funding at the time this was initiated. The Virginia Association of Counties did provide coverage, they still provide coverage, but it is a one-time election. Once you've elected one or the other, you cannot change. And at that time, we had two current claims, and for a small, for a county, two claims was like a lot. And they go, basically, I went to their presentations and things, but the director told me then, he said, you've had two claims, there's no way you're going to be able to do self-funding and save them then, because it'd take years for that to reduce down. Now, state premiums increase, not every year, but just about every year, you're seeing increases in those, but we're locked in through VRS.
This resolution is just more or less important than their resolution?
Yes, they're asking for your support, or they would use this to go to the General Assembly and say, we have support from X number of counties in the state or town, cities, whatever, to adopt legislation to expand this.
Entertained for a motion to approve or disapprove the resolution for Nelson County Board of Supervisors. So I have a motion, your second. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify the same, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, the Board reports the recommendation of the county attorney.
Adam, anything you want to report? Don't it properly discuss?
Okay, thank you. Reports the recommendation of the county administrator.
Can I have one heard, Dan?
No.
It's going to be one of those nights, I'm sorry.
And your time will be good enough. Lee, you've got to go.
Yeah. She's got time for you up here right now.
The first one, if I can, I'll pass over, because I'm able, Mr. Cobb, to address that, when it deals with airport hangar tenants and base aircraft. He requested that this be on the agenda. The second one is the request from Mr. Kay to potentially tap on to the county water line, and we discussed that, I just need to be able to give him an answer on that one where he's at.
For who?
Jason Kay.
I thought we agreed on that last meeting.
There's no motion on it, just some discussion, but no actual approval.
What was your recommendation on it?
I talked to him a little bit today, and he doesn't necessarily need to install a tap now. One of his sons is making plans potentially by next year, spring of next year, to either build or place a manufactured home on that property. But Jason is just trying to ensure that he would have access to tap on to the line. The, I don't know, I haven't talked to the town, I don't know if they would be willing to work on the meter situation. Right now, our meter is on down at Route 70. Where he's talking about tapping on the line is where Idris crosses Paul's property and starts through the gate on a landfill property, that he would tap on, on this side of it, and have a meter there. Our question is, if the town would be willing at that time to relocate our meter to that point on the other side of where he taps, that way we wouldn't be an issue where we've got a master meter at the road, and you have to deduct whatever his meter reading is to determine what our usage is. It would just simplify the process, they could read each meter. If there's a leak before you get to that point, that's something we'd have to resolve. I don't think the town would take that line. They might, we can make that request, but if they did, another possibility would be to leave the existing meter where it's at, he would install one where he taps it going to his property. We could put another one at his highest height, so that if there's a leak, and we're not getting the water, and he's not getting the water, we would know it was in that lower section, but that's going to cost us an extra meter. I don't know what the meter cost is now, but didn't get a chance to talk to Jerry before.
Well, I wasn't thinking, we need to do, spend no money on a meter to help somebody else.
That's my thinking, because they're willing to tap on, but he's just trying to lay the groundwork to know that he can get water, if he wants, if he chooses to locate there.
I'd be on for tapping on, but I can tell you firsthand, it would wait. We've got the same situation, we've got, all the water comes to the one meter and goes to somebody else, and you'd be surprised how many times in a year that creates a problem. They've got to manually figure that bill for both places, and then if there's one leak somewhere, then somebody has to go and determine, is it leaking that way, or is it leaking on the first way? So it's three or four times a year, it's a problem when you've got all the water through one meter and another one's got service after that, so.
And a leak's not always apparent in cars, you've got some caves and things, and water can be going down, and you'll never see evidence of it on the surface. It is no dilution water somewhere.
But you know, if you have the meters right there, one goes to cave, and one goes to other use, then that's all we fix is that.
Yeah.
Is that your recommendation, to have two meters up top?
I think that's the best solution.
Good to have him pay for them?
Yeah. He wasn't thrilled about that, but he wants the water, and I think that's probably, I think another meter is going to be cheaper than having to lay another water line, or drill well.
So he would have the cutoff there, too. Jonesville, there would be an agreement with Jonesville that they knew the math, basically, if he has a loss and it's coming through our meter in the model, we're not paying the bill, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, if we just put a meter...
There'd be two meters, wouldn't there? They'd need three.
Well, the ideal would be for the town to just, for us to put a meter wherever he taps in, and then bills at those meters. Now, that means the town's going to take responsibility for leakage on that line up to that point. If they're willing to do that, we can get, I would just move the existing meter up to that point, but if they're not, we can identify where the leakage's at. I mean, at least within that vein, I mean. And it's not so much identifying the leak at that point, it's the accounting issue of reading a master meter, we only had one meter going off of that, and anything that's going through there, we're going to get the bill for.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And we've got no way to determine if it's in that line up to where his tap is.
When you move a meter, though, going to cave, and then the other meter goes to...
Yeah, we can determine that.
They'd be two meters close by.
Right.
So they're read independently, and they, each one would show their own leak. It'd be two meters.
I have that data, I've got two meters sitting side by side, one's going to the cave, and one goes to the other house over here, and they're sitting side by side, two meters. I think about two meters.
And they read two meters.
You read two meters.
It's like they were mile apart, too, indeed.
Yeah, you've got to have two different meters, otherwise you ain't getting mixed up or whatever, occasionally.
Do we want to have Mr. Poe make a request to the town to cover the line, or just do the two meters?
Two meters, just two meters, yeah.
I mean, regardless, you'd have two meters. The only question is if they're going to...
Only question, regardless.
You're going to request them? So we don't really make a like decision until we know what their interest is?
Well...
Side to side?
If he, if not, he's going to be, he don't have to be liable for placing those meters by the way I look at, and he can make his claims one way or the other. That gives us another attitude for getting the town to do it.
My personal opinion is, you got to have two meters.
You have two meters.
So you just need a, you just need a motion for, to be okay for you to go start requesting? I'll make that motion. Motion in a second.
Well, if it's just to request additional information, we're not authorizing the tap, I don't need a motion, let's just kick it down the road and none of us.
Ain't going to do you no good to go request it if we ain't authorized to tap on it.
Well, okay. So that's included, that you're authorized?
That's what I was thinking.
So what's the motion?
To authorize him to be able to tap into it with... Use those two meters.
Continue to vote, they're paying for it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion in a second. Second. All, any discussion? All in favor, signify the same, aye. Aye. Any opposed?
The rest of this, this one I just got yesterday. Each year, they're required to, Mr. Revenue's Office makes calculations to determine the personal property tax relief rate. It has to be calculated every year, and the percentage of relief for this for 2023 has been calculated at 47.14%. That's up just a little bit from last year, I think last year it was 43.78, so that's a little bit of extra relief that owners' personal property will receive that, that this needs to be adopted in order for them to be able to prepare their tax payments.
I'll make a motion if we adopt Resolution 23-008.
Second. A motion in a second, any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify the same, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
All right. The next one, just, this is the task orders for the annual landfill gas and groundwater monitoring reports, and the engineer really needs to get started on this. Cost is pretty much in line with what we paid in past years. There's two task orders there, one for the landfill gas, one for the landfill groundwater. These are required reports by DQ, you have to do them. The lump sum cost for the gas report's $2,750, the lump sum cost for the groundwater report is $13,750. Now, there is, in the groundwater task order, there's also a provision for a groundwater monitoring plan amendments, which is driven by the fact that we had, beginning in 2020, beginning in 2020, we've had an exceedance of cobalt on one well that we monitor, uh, which exceeds groundwater protection standards. We currently are in a remote remedial mode for that. We have seen decreasing concentration levels on that, and once it drops back below the remedial mode, we will have to file for an amendment. Uh, they are estimating a cost of six thousand dollars for that, and that would be billed hourly as necessary. So that's included in that as well.
I'll entertain for a motion. Approve the groundwater and gas monitoring reports.
So what?
Have a motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, six to five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This next one. It's a potential for a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers flood study. Back in 2017, the school superintendent, I guess that direction went, if you want to come to school board, initiated a possible flood study, uh, in the hopes of obtaining funding for new schools, uh, this, the Duxford County, other areas. Over the passage of time, it was, wasn't pushed forward at that time, didn't make it to an application stage, but was just sort of set aside. Recently, the Corps has contacted me to see if there's continued interest in the study of at least three or possibly four areas of the county. There's a little caveat with that, because with the passage of the bipartisan infrastructure law, uh, there is no local sponsor cost share. Typically, these projects have a twenty-five or thirty-five percent cost share on them, uh, but this would be one-hundred percent federally paid. The three primary areas and possibly a fourth area, uh, we'd only discuss three of these, but I noticed when they submitted the proposed scope, they included four. Well, the first one would be in St. Charles, uh, you have the school there, you also have the health clinic, and of course, all of that area is subject to flooding down through the old town. Uh, in Penning Gap, it would be along the North Fork of the Powell, where it passes through the town out to, onto, there, on 421, uh, through that area. Uh, not only, I don't think there's ever been any flooding at school, which have a large business district area there that has potential flooding issues. Uh, then another area would be Kane Creek and the Ben Hur area, near Lee High and the boat tech schools, and then the fourth area they mentioned in the project scope, is Town Branch here in Jonesville. Uh, there's no obligation to go beyond the study phase, you're not committing to actually conduct a, a construction project or anything, uh, so the only thing you're agreeing to at this point is just the study. But the, uh, the BIO law also stipulates that project costs could be covered a hundred percent if you do move forward with a proposed project from this study. They do require a letter of interest for the study project, uh, and, and the project scope, which they have basically completed, uh, but it has to be submitted by August the 21st, and that's why I brought it in at the late hour, and I didn't get these documents until Friday or yesterday. Uh, and then, the Corps has completed the bulk of the project scope, which leaves only the letter of interest to submit. And the Corps sort of, I guess, done us a favor, uh, we are an eligible area, uh, and, and they have held this up and held that previous request, uh, especially with the hundred percent funding coming through. So I would need approval from the board for the two sides of the letter intent, or the letter of interest for this project to move it forward.
And a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion, uh, so what? I have a motion, I hear a second. I'll second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, when you say construction, constructed project, hundred percent, what kind of project are you talking about specifically?
Flood mitigation, something to improve the, either flow of the water, or to mitigate damage, potential future damage. I mean, there's many things that the Corps looks at.
When's our last flood survey? Last time that they studied the county?
Oh, well, uh, I don't know now, you mean in general, the entire flood plain? I have no idea when, when the last time they did this. This is looking at, at areas where there's been repetitive flooding over the years, known areas of flooding, and which all of these are.
So these are already in the flood plain?
Yes, yeah, this is not establishing these as flood plain, this is looking for ways to improve the situation and, and prevent future flooding.
In Harlan, it's been a, you know, it's been a ongoing tremendous project for ten years in town of Harlan to get them from, keep from flooding the town, and it's spent a lot of money.
I don't see why any. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor, six to five, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I have one other item for closed session dealing with property lease. The St. Charles ARPA funds, or the ARPA funding that initially was allocated for the town of St. Charles, uh, I was able to discuss it with the state, uh, we are, the funding no longer exists. Uh, the response I got back was after thorough review of the federal regulations governing the funds allocated for the town, collaboration with the governor's office and the Virginia Department of Planning and Budget, Commonwealth made the decision to return the one hundred fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars to the U.S. Department of Trade, and that was done in the spring of 2022. Got the final draft, essential all the proposed draft and the ad for the Assistant County Commissioner, uh, only, only the response I got back was Mr. Cobb's, and I got home to spots on his proposed changes, so I just, I prepared this.
You sent my, did you back?
No, no, I didn't get any response from you on that, you copied everybody on it, so I just wanted to lay the final copy out to you, uh, and the, uh, the four newspapers for advertising, as well as the online.
Do you make my changes?
Yes. The basic changes, a couple of them, just commas, and, uh, most of the, most of the change is down in the third paragraph, the last paragraph there on education requirements.
I'll take your word, I'll take your word for what you changed.
Okay.
Do you want a motion on it?
Uh, no, I just want consensus that it's ready to go as, as it's presented.
Looks good.
Everybody agreeable? Anybody not? Yes, you got her blessing, Mr. Poe.
All right. That's, that's it for me.
Thank you. Reports and recommendations of the board.
I don't have a question.
I'll make a motion that we appoint tonight to lead the Southwest Virginia Land and Livestanders Committee.
A motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, six to five, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
The landowner at Flatwoods at Borders, the convenience center, uh, was complaining to me about trash, our trash blowing out, animals getting it, carrying it on the dirt property. Is that part of the workers that work the site's job to go outside and fence and bring things back in, or what can we do about that?
We can have them police an area, uh, how far over, over the property is it going?
I didn't ask for footage, he just said it's coming over on me, and what can you do about it?
Let me get with Gary on that, I think they can probably work on it.
Parking lot at DSS looks pretty bad, uh, could we have somebody look at that, make a recommendation about cracked ceiling or, uh, seal on the whole thing? Have you looked at that lately?
Uh, I know there's some grass and weeds growing up through it.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty bad.
Okay. We'll, we'll take a look at that.
Uh, Mr. Bozeman, I talked about, uh, the opioid settlement funds, uh, and I talked to Mr. Dean with the school system about, uh, paying some people that have addiction issues to speak to the students at the schools. What are y'all's thoughts on that? Basically, they give a TED talk, and, uh, we pay them to prepare and give the speech to the students. I don't have a dollar figure or anybody in mind, but, uh, what do y'all think about us pursuing that for either professionals to speak, or people that have suffered from addiction, or maybe both? And I think that is an eligible expenditure, I mean, it's so for all things, you can spend it on.
Y'all with that?
Termites at the institute building, and we had a termite inspection there, danger, we sprayed for termites there at the institute building.
Yeah.
That floor in the northeast room seems to keep sagging more.
Yeah, that, that seal's gone, I think, I mean, I don't know if it's termites.
Well, I saw some, I tried to get under there, when you go downstairs, you, I couldn't figure out how to get to it to, to look and see what the problem was, but anyway, do you think about having a termite inspection, or just spray the building for termites, or?
I'd probably have it inspected to see what the extent of the damage is, if it is.
Okay. Y'all okay with that?
Uh, I noticed in Mr. Collinsworth's report that he recommended that we go ahead and surplus the '06 Mack truck. Do we have other things, police cars, et cetera, that we can go ahead and have a surplus of?
Uh, we will have, and do you want to have sale, do you want us to know that?
Well, sell it one way or another, I'm not saying how.
Uh, now, we can get, we've been getting more out of used cruisers and things on land, uh, because when we have them locally, not the only, only people that show up buying them are junk dealers. We can list it, we can list the truck on good deals, we have a license on there. We should have some cruisers, I don't know how many, maybe three, I don't know how many have been wrecked, or gone, but, uh, we've been notified that our, the ones that were ordered last year, uh, will start production the first full week of September, so hoping for delivery sometime in October. So, uh, but we can go ahead and list the truck now.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and list whatever surplus stuff Mr. Poe finds that needs to be sold on good deals, and that we put an advertisement in the local paper like we did last time, uh, advertising that the county has things listed on good deals.
I have a motion, I hear a second.
Sir?
Do we have to have a motion for that, for you to list that stuff? I wouldn't come for it, but if you want to, it's fine. You made that motion, if you were there.
You don't want me on record, or?
I don't, yeah, I found it, I just, I just think it's something that ought to be done all the time, I mean, I think that's something that ought to be, if, if it comes up, it ought to be put on there.
We had one that said over there for four years, so I'm making sure now we have.
I got you, yeah.
That's all I have.
You want to talk about the airport hangers?
For fresh memory, I want to talk.
The, uh, issue is about, uh, whether they want to, uh, go ahead and anyone that does not have a base aircraft at the airport who has a hanger in it, whether or not we terminate their lease, in the hopes of attracting someone who will base an aircraft there.
Yeah, I guess that's the question, if this board is okay with giving the airport authority, the authority to make the call on sending out letters and send something out to end the lease for anyone that's not keeping a big space plane there.
Yeah, I think I thought we need to do it, because if I incentivize somebody to put the plane back in there, we need a motion on that, or?
Yeah, the, because the, the lease agreement is with the county, and to transfer that authority, I would prefer a moment.
I'll make a motion.
Second. A motion in the second, any further discussion? All in favor, six to five, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Jesse? I just had one, I'd like to, uh, discuss some personnel in closed session, if you want to add that there in closed session.
That's what my recommendation was, so we're moving in with.
Contracts. Was it just contracts personally? Doesn't leave?
Yeah, mine apparently are contracts.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session in pursuit of 2.2, there's 3711, subdue one personnel, eight consultation with counsel, 29 contracts.
A motion, second, in the second. All in favor, six to five, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?